Welcome everyone to the City Council Session. We're meeting at 22:15 PM. Um, Councilmember Martinix is not here. She has a little brother-in-law who's in hospice. I'm sure he'll have some prayers. I'm not sure if we're close to having a week's of home. So, all right, first of the items tonight is our pavement management and concrete utilities program. What you have called the works for.
Excuse me, Mayor. Are you going to check if any of the rest of us? Because if any of us feel ill, we won't have a meeting today. Is that, is everybody else okay? Because we've got to keep our quorum here.
I'm hanging in there.
I was just making a joke. And make sure that we keep our group here. Otherwise, we won't have a quorum.
All right, um, the homework structure, DeAndre, is here to present. And hopefully no one gets it. I'm not talking about any of them. But, um, and, uh, any of these people, right-hand person?
Yes. He is my right-hand person. This is Sean Farmer, who's our construction manager. And, um, he's been intimately involved in the concrete utility program for several years. And now, we're getting him more involved in the pavement maintenance program. So, um, we do have a lot to cover tonight. So, I'm going to be, um, trying, work through the material very quickly. And then, basically, so we're looking at two programs. The pavement management, I'll walk through that. And then, I'll stop and ask questions, or be able to answer questions, as well as Sean will. And then, we'll go through the concrete utility, and again, have time to talk about that program as well. Um, so with that, we'll start, once Sam gets the PowerPoint up. So, what we're looking at, so, as you know, um, we've consistently performed pavement maintenance in the city for many, many years. A lot of that work is often done in-house with our own street crews. And that typically consists of milling off the top layer of the pavement and replacing it with a new layer of asphalt. And what we're, what has happened in the past is that, street staff especially, goes around, evaluates the streets each year, and comes up with their maintenance plan for the following year, based on their visual assessment of the roadways. And we're saying, we're going to add to that by doing a, not only the visual assessment, but also a quantitative assessment. And then, also breaking the city up into areas. If you remember our discussion based on asset management, asset management is that really having, um, not only doing projects, but doing them in a very thoughtful and methodical way, so that we're looking at not only the whole city, but getting the most bang for our buck. And so, we'll walk through that in a little bit more detail here, and describe what we're talking about. Um, so again, I'll touch on both of these programs, and leave time to answer questions. So, when we talk about, and the analogy that I make is taking care of your house. So, if you have siding, you want to paint that every so often. If you have a roof, you know that at certain times, you can do, like, maybe a few of the shingles blow off, and you can go up there and repair them. But, at some point, you have to repair the whole roof, or take it all off and, um, replace it. You can also sometimes put a second layer on. I don't know if that's allowed anymore, but you used to be able to do that. So, with those analogies, what we're trying to do is say, what is the, on this particular segment of street, what is the right repair? And, based on the distresses that we're observing. And then, um, is it the right, is it good enough in terms of pavement preservation? So, um, again, do we just want to paint the siding? Or do we have to replace the siding by replacing the entire street, or that top, um, the entire top surface? And then, is it the right timing? Meaning, have we lost the street, in the sense that we have to go for total reconstruction? Or, we caught it before it gets too bad, so that we can do some sort of preservative type of maintenance to it? And so, if we've gone too long, there might be the point where, yes, it's bad, and we'll let it go for several more years, because, um, it doesn't, you know, again, we're looking at overall, on the cost perspective, does it make sense to replace it now? Or, do we wait? We want to really invest those dollars where they make sense, and putting more of the dollars in preventative maintenance than putting them into corrective. So, I'll get that, go through that in a little bit more detail. So, just some basic statistics here. Roughly, um, sixty-six percent of our streets are those locals and collectors, more of your neighborhood-type streets. And then, collectors would be streets like Oxford, or Logan, Downing, things like that. And the Arturo streets, of course, are those more heavily-used ones. They have higher traffic volume, is usually more lanes. So, Broadway, obviously, um, things like that. And, this is, so what has occurred, back in 2016, they did do kind of a preliminary evaluation of the streets, and was calculated, basically, what's called the remaining service life. So, what that means is that, based on this tool, or this analysis that was completed, they're saying that thirty-two percent of our streets, so roughly a third, have a life expectancy of eight years or less. This is, um, not a typical rating for streets. You know, it's like, well, who's to say that there's only eight years left in a particular street? Um, so what I get out of this, more so, is that, look at the hump, if you will, in the graph. And that there's a lot of streets in that, probably eight years and less. And so, there, what you would prefer to see, of course, is more up on the upper end, but also a flatter kind of a graph. So, that we're, again, if we're consistently replacing or maintaining streets, that we have more in each of those categories. So, it's a more, we're repairing the same amount every single year. So, that's a little bit worrisome, to see such a high percentage. And, of course, if we don't do anything, that high point in the curve just moves, keeps moving to the left. So, our recommendation was, would be, is we're going to go out and do a further analysis, do what's called an overall condition index, to look at each of the streets. I'm going to jump ahead of here a little bit. And, basically, that gives a rating from zero to one hundred of what that particular street segment is. So, then, we can calculate, not only, let's say, on a particular block, but then, overall, what's our overall condition index. And that's a very typical, um, rating that other street, or other cities use. This is some data that was collected by the Colorado Asphalt Pavement Association. I used 2017, because, um, everybody had reported. And you can see here where Englewood lies, kind of seems a little bit low at the bottom here. But, in reality, so this was self-reported by staff. Um, the problem is, you know, who, we don't have an OCI rating, because we haven't done that analysis yet. So, I'm not sure exactly who reported on this, or where staff is getting. But, again, I think the important thing here is, you can see that these cities, who are spending quite a bit more amount of money per lane mile, are getting a much higher OCI level. And that's probably what they've, they want to invest in. So, they've had a discussion amongst their city council, and say, we want a higher overall condition index on our roadways, and so, we're willing to pay for that. So, I think what we want to do is come back to council, once we do the rating, and say, where would we lie? We don't know right now what our average OCI is. And so, once we have that data, if we're spending anywhere from, you know, three thousand to four thousand dollars per year, are you comfortable trying to hit for a sixty-five, or a seventy, or maybe it's a sixty? And that's a thoughtful discussion that we want to have with council, once we get that data. Um, just jumping back here, I did want to touch on this graphic. So, the red shows what would happen if you, let's say, we start out, this is OCI on the left. So, one hundred is the best. And so, you start off, on day one, it's been constructed. And you can see how it falls over time. Then, you rebuild it, goes back to a hundred, and you continue that pattern. The idea with preventative maintenance is that you're doing these smaller repairs, and you're keeping that overall condition index at a higher level over time, until finally, at some point, you do have to reconstruct it. And the, and the hope is that, while, and knowing this, is that you're spending less money, and, if you're that person who's living on that street, your overall condition index is staying at a much higher level than waiting, you know, until it drops to twenty, before the city would rebuild it. So, we have three different types of maintenance that we're focused on, or groups of maintenance. That's corrective. Um, probably the most important thing to note there is that that's not only the most extensive, but the most expensive. So, when you're talking about a, a complete mill and overlay, or reconstructing the entire street, that's expensive. Uh, and, much more so than a preventative maintenance, a slurry seal, we did some of that last year. We've done a lot of micro-surfacing in the past. Um, that's more of a surface treatment. And, again, that right road at the right time, you're trying to do that where, excuse me, where the roads are in that good-to-fair condition, probably in that fifty-five to seventy-five OCI range, where you can catch them. And, again, it's like painting the siding. It's still in good enough condition that, by painting it, you're sealing out those elements, and preserving the integrity of that siding, before it gets too bad. And the routine maintenance is both planned, so that would be things like, that we want to do, like crack sealing, that our staff can do. But then, also reactive. Um, so, pothole patching is a reactive response to problems in the roadway. And, um, so we'd obviously like to move more from the reactive to the cyclical or planned, but we know that those reactive things are going to continue. We're always going to have potholes that we have to fix. And how do we do that in a thoughtful and methodical way? So, our idea, the, the concept here, we've divided the city up into five areas. Those are roughly proportional to the same amount of pavement area. So, again, if we're spending a consistent amount of money, that should be spread relatively evenly across the, across each zone. So, we're not spending more in one area than we might in the other. We broke those down relatively, um, some, you know, rough, um, streets, excuse me. So, if we could describe to folks, hey, if you're west of Broadway, and north of Oxford, your area is up this year. And so, it gives them, instead of doing, you know, one street here, and one street in the south, and one street up over here off of Tahan, all of a sudden, we're concentrating those communication efforts, doing variable message boards, and all of a sudden, people can relate, like, yeah, I'm west of Broadway, and north of Oxford, so it must be my area this year. And the idea is that we do the routine maintenance, that stuff in-house, so more of that crack sealing, prepping the road for the preventative, the year before we do the preventative. So, as we walk through the years here, you can see that the blue, or the green follows the blue. And then, what we want to do is have, let me, um, jump ahead here, then you can see the orange, which is the corrective, is, we want to, so let's say, we reconstruct a particular street, and put down new asphalt. So, between roughly three and eight years, the recommendation is to come back and seal that street in some fashion. So, again, we've just reconstructed, and we want to keep it in good condition, so we're putting, the green would follow the orange by four years. And that's what this cycle is based on. See, the idea that we're working around the city, um, and that it's, it's very thoughtful in where we're going, and then, what we're planning to do in the upcoming years. So, 2019 is kind of our kickoff year, so we don't have a preventative maintenance. We're focusing instead on doing corrective maintenance. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, in and around the hospitals especially. And then, we would do the routine maintenance in Zone Three. So, again, green comes after blue. So, you should see that, that area, Zone Three, is green in the following year. Then, we've jumped from, in the corrective zone is Zone One, we've jumped to Zone Two, and you can see on, we're prepping on routine work in 2020, to get ready for 2021, the green. So, the idea is that, again, we're being very cyclical, and the benefits of this, for the public, is that even though they're, they might not like that their street is five years out, at least they know that we have a plan. And I think that's, that's very, um, you know, again, if people might not be happy that they have to wait, at least they understand that there is a system, and that we're going to get to them at some point. And that we're trying to arrest the, the streets as quickly as possible, while still having to do some corrective work. Because we do know that, based on that first diagram, that we do have some streets that need corrective work. So, that's a very quick overview. I think the other benefit, I'll just jump, or talk about this, is our utilities, our private utilities, and our public utilities. So, working with the utility department, where do we need to replace or repair water and sewer? That's going to drive some of these decisions as well. We also want to provide these maps to, like, companies like Excel and CenturyLink, because the last thing we want is for them to come in and tear up the roads after we've just got done building them. That doesn't help anybody. Now, you could say, well, that's, Excel's cost, which it is. We would make them repave the road, but we're all Excel customers. So, one way or the other, they're passing that on to us, as residents, as customers, as businesses. And so, how can we work more closely with them, to give them the upfront knowledge, so that they can plan their work in accordance with our schedule? We also think that by concentrating in those areas, there's going to be likely lower mobilization costs, so we don't have the contractor kind of jumping all over the place. Again, that kind of, um, very concentrated, um, communication to the public, flyers, all of a sudden, you kind of see all that activity in your neighborhood, and then, we're out of there for another few years. So, instead of, again, kind of jumping. And what we're proposing is that the concrete repairs would follow that orange zone. So, um, because of the ADA requirements that are in place, we have to upgrade those pedestrian ramps, whenever we do more than just like a slurry seal, or any kind of, um, very surface maintenance. That means we have to look at all those ramps, upgrade them to the new standards, and so, we'd like to do that in conjunction with any of that more extensive work that we're, is going on. So, with that, I'd stop and just answer any questions at this point. Councilmember Berentine.
Um, how are you able to do the zone piece of it, before you're doing this OCI that you want to?
Great question. Um, so, we're, we're preparing the request for proposal right now. So, we would, um, we want to get that data back, and then, we'd come up with that specific plan within Zone One. So, we're going to take, for 2019, we'll take, we'll rely more on, more heavily on the visual assessment of those areas. Um, but we should get the data back, probably early summer, so we can still make some adjustments to the program.
Okay. As you're doing that RFP, could you please include the process and standards that the OCI is using? Because it, it didn't go over that. And then, the 2016, uh, that, where they did the remaining service life, um, said we paid for something to be done. So, if we could have a copy of what that assessment was, and why you don't want to go by that, like what you said, like, who's to say that there's eight more years? But, even in the OCI, more than likely, there's some assessment piece to this, where it's still a who's to say that it's eight years. So, I'd just like to see the difference in why you're wanting to do the OCI, rather than the remaining service life, uh, portion of it, what's different between those two? Um, and how much that study cost us? Because I don't want to get stuck in perpetual study mode either. So, if you would include those, when you provide, provide that information. And then, um, how are we measuring the reactive? Because that part I didn't, I didn't see on there. So, I just want to know, you, we want to be less reactive, but I want to know how we're measuring that. I appreciate the way that you put it in there, for the corrective routine, and preventative, I get the flow that you're trying to get there. But, if that's to eliminate the reactive, I just want to know how we're measuring that. And then, how are we measuring the, um, oh, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the conversation on that one bullet point, about trying to match the, um, like, you go, well, we'll do the infrastructure for the sewer at the same time. When we're having a separate study done on that, and we may not be able to do that, might be, um, might not be possible, because those are two different things. You might have more need in one than the other. But, if there is an opportunity to match, how do you see that happening? And how are those two different studies going to come together to make that happen? So, if you'd include those, I would appreciate that.
May I answer?
Yes, go ahead.
Excellent, excellent point on that last point. So, I think, um, uh, to that, I think this is an iterative process, over several years. So, I don't think we're going to answer it, you know, perfectly, in this first year, that as the sewer and water come on board, we're going to know more, we're going to have more knowledge about where the storm sewer improvements are, that we want to do. Um, so, that might drive some of this as well. So, um, I see us coming back to you on a yearly basis, with more information, as we're gathering that, and preparing, and being much more, um, just more informed as we go along each year. And then, to your first question, um, the, the first study that was completed was for seventy-five hundred dollars. And so, I think, while, again, it was a good first step to get that remaining service life, the estimate, um, what we're planning to do, it was based on Army Corps of Engineers, is what the OCI, and they actually go out, and they measure the amount of distresses. So, they measure the amount of rutting, the amount of cracking, fatigue stresses, very different types of stresses, and then, that's calculated together to get that zero to one hundred. So, it is a very quantitative process that they follow, that's, um, was developed by the Army Corps of Engineers. And I would guess that that, um, again, while we don't want to just spend more money to spend more money, that it's probably going to be in more like that forty to fifty thousand range, to collect that data.
Right. And so, and I appreciate the, because you don't always know the questions that are come up, and I appreciate the information that you've put together. But, what I'm, what I'm wanting is to make sure that that's documented. So, that we just have, um, the pieces that might be missing in this, is, is what I'm asking for, is that I, if you say, I don't think that this is as good, then if you just document that, so you go, this is what I'm hoping, and this is why I want to put the RFP together, and do an OCI instead, because this is where I think the 2016 fell short. Because, obviously, we didn't use the 2016 for anything. And whether it's ten dollars, seventy-five hundred dollars, or fifty thousand dollars, if we didn't utilize that information, then we want to make sure we have a benchmark in the future, for making this decision, as, as we go forward, so we don't go for a seventy-five hundred dollar study. If it's truly not going to do us any good, and just waste our time and money. And then, those other things that are brought up, if you would just kind of document them in there, so that we kind of have a feel for where you're going. I, I, I see that you're trying to marry the two, the infrastructure issue, and this, so that we can have as little road tearing up, duplication, and stuff like that. I'm just kind of interested in how you see that ability coming together. I mean, I know you're trying to do it, but how do you think you can maneuver the two, to get the best bang for the buck on both, both processes, as we're doing it? And I know that'll take some time. I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Russell.
Um, and this question may, um, mine goes back to the chart, on the remaining service life. And I was wondering, once we do the OCI study, and we start implementing this plan, on that, um, remaining service life study, we would expect at some point that all of those would level out. Correct, or not necessarily?
Over time, you know, it, I think it will depend, I, I'm hesitant, because, um, I'm not sure, again, where we are. I'd like to see that graph, um, of the OCI, before I answer that. I would hope so, but with thirty percent in that eight-year life, I can't relate that to a specific dollar amount. I think the important thing to start to help to level that off, is to really have consistent funding over, um, every single year, and that there's not dips in that. The communities, um, I'll, uh, just knowing some folks over, let's say, in Wheat Ridge, you know, what they've done, they're not the highest here, but they've got a pretty darn good OCI. And the reason for that is because they consistently, um, do their projects, and they consistently put enough money, maybe not the highest, but they put enough, and they've got a good program that's getting towards that. So, I think over time, we're going to see that, not necessarily level off, but maybe push a little bit to the, more to the right.
Okay. And, and I appreciate that. And this is really one thing that I've wanted, really, since I've been on council, really to deal more with infrastructure and expenses there. And so, I'm encouraged that we will get to that discussion, um, about what this council wants to do. The other question that I have is on the routine maintenance type, where, uh, potholes and things like that, um, is that the reason for the pothole patching machine? Did that come up before this whole plan came up? Or, could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. The pothole patching machine was contemplated before this discussion. So, they, that was in the works even before I got here. They had gotten a quote, I think, and, um, done the demo up in the city of North Glenn last fall, maybe? So, it's been a while. Um, I think the idea there, but it fits great into this, because it really is, um, that piece of machinery really makes it more efficient for the crew of three or four, to go out with one, um, vehicle, and keep that asphalt hot. And because it's fairly sporadic, and we do these utility repairs as well, some days we could have a lot, and, and other days, we, we have less. And so, we're not wasting all that asphalt. So, hopefully, that answers your question.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Councilmember Sierra.
Yeah, just one question. So, we currently have one point five nine six million set aside for the maintenance budget for 2019. I think it jumps up to one point seven million in a couple of years. Are those numbers reflective in the methodology? Or, can we expect to see maybe an increase, or maybe even a decrease, to those numbers in future years?
Yes. Um, again, I think I'm going to, to, um, waver just a little bit, until we get that OCI data. I'm, I'm, feel good that we're at the levels that we're at. And, um, I don't necessarily see us going down, but I see, again, maybe, a request to stay at that consistent level, with maybe some cost of, uh, or that index cost upping just a little bit, to account for construction, um, cost increases. So, I think we'll have a better idea, once we get this data back. And so, we are planning to come back to you, and we can address it better at that time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Quest.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you for the presentation. I, I appreciate it, and I, I will echo, um, Mayor Protem Russell. I think that, uh, government's responsibility, the two cores of it are public safety and infrastructure, with roads being a fundamental component of that infrastructure piece. If we were to go back to the remaining service life slide, and I think that, uh, Councilmember Ber, excuse me, Mayor Protem had you there as well. So, on the far-right, twenty, is, is that the long end? That's the most you're ever going to get out of the road, is twenty years?
That's what this, that's what the, um, program estimates. And, of course, obviously, a road is going to last longer than twenty years. That's why I take this with a little bit of a grain of salt, is what does twenty mean to them versus zero? So, at zero, I think we, you'd still have, be able to drive on it. You know, it might not be the greatest road, but, um, obviously, we, we're designing roads that are going to last for more than twenty years, too.
Okay. And that led to a larger question. Does that mean that every two decades, we have essentially replaced every road in Englewood? And that wouldn't necessarily be the case, then?
Not at all. And we, we are certainly, to Councilman Sierra's point, we are not, um, funding at that level right now, by any means.
Okay, very good. Uh, the next question goes back to the routine maintenance, and I'm kind of advancing to that slide myself here. Uh, so, you mentioned that each particular, I, I can't recall the zone, each zone will have its, uh, order, in terms of if it's getting the routine preventative corrective. So, and let's say somebody is further down. We've, one of us has a constituents that's calling us and saying, I've got a pothole in front of my house right now, and you're telling me it's three years before somebody's going to get out here? Is, will there be, um, still, I guess, in the routine maintenance, will there be, um, I guess, more just daily repairs, if they're needed here and there, that seem to be more urgent?
Absolutely, yes. And thank you for bringing that up. Um, that is by no means the intent. So, again, with that reactive, it really means that we're reacting across the city. So, um, typically, you know, especially like after the types of weather that we're having these last few weeks, we've got a lot of potholes. We've got utility repairs across the street that we'll be responding to. So, the intent would be, though, is that within a particular zone, if we're crack sealing, or doing probably maybe more extensive pothole patching, where we're actually cutting it out, and doing a repair, as opposed to just filling the hole with, with asphalt, if you will.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, we both come from a state that has, I'm saying that there are two seasons.
It's one of the reasons I got into civil engineering.
One is winter, and the second one is road construction. And that's what happens over and over there. I, I am so excited to see this plan. And, in your mind, and thinking behind it, and how you've gone about creating this, I know other cities have been doing it like this. And I believe that there's probably been a process like that going on in the city, so to some extent, it's not been as clear to us. And this helps everyone know that there's, you know, it's being coordinated in a more chunked way, that makes sense for the, the dollars. So, I'm really excited about this, and support it, um, to see what you can come up with for the next stage. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And, and I think, um, you know, as we commute, I think the other piece of this is really the public communication. So, um, you know, this is a program, hopefully, that we can explain in a few paragraphs, in a few, um, clear drawings, or, or maps, and people will get it. And so, as we, um, look forward, how can we put this into the magazine? How can we start to share this on, online, on the website, and in different media outlets, to start to communicate that to people? So, thank you very much. So, I'll jump ahead here, and, and run quickly through the concrete utility program. Not sure how much people are aware of this, but, um, this is a unique program to, or to Englewood. And, it was established almost, um, uh, twenty- to start to communicate that to people? So, thank you very much. So I'll jump ahead here and run quickly through the concrete utility program. Not sure how much people are aware of this, but this is a unique program to, or to Inglewood. And it was established almost 20 years ago now, and, or a little over 20 years. And so we've been collecting money from quite a few people. There's about, I think that's 6% or 7% have opted out. So they would still be responsible for their sidewalk, just not, so if repairs come up, then they have to pay for that, not through the city's program. So the fee was last increased in 2013. And as it says there, people are paying just over 12 cents per square foot. So $40 per year is a pretty economical program to make sure that your sidewalk is repaired in a good fashion. So you can see here on this graphic, just how many repairs we're doing per year, and they're averaging anywhere from $1,700 to $2,100 per property. And so at that $40 rate, and again, not everybody's paying that, but that's typical, it's going to take 42 to 54 years to pay that back. So I think what that tells us, we're probably going to look at increasing the rates slightly. But we also want to manage this program very carefully, because, of course, we don't want to raise it too much. And so how long is a repair really good for? Is it 50 years? Or is, what's that rate, dollar amount, where people aren't paying too much, or they opt out because they might as well just pay it themselves if they happen to have a repair? This is a great example. I love this photo. Sean took this. This is the kind of situation that we're dealing with in, with homeowners, where we need to put in bed ramps. Again, the ADA is a federal regulation that we have to follow. And you can see here, we've got a sidewalk running along the one side of the property, and we don't have a bed ramp, because how do you possibly get one in there? If we went and talked to these folks, and we're going to start to have to, we've kind of shoehorned in, in most places. But this is probably some bushes that they built, installed, or planted quite a long time ago. And the reality is that their right-of-way line, most city streets, you know, are 32 feet wide. And then you've got anywhere from eight to 10 feet behind the edge of the pavement that's actually still city right-of-way. So I'm guessing that their lot is really up here at the top of the slope. And on this side, it's probably somewhere just in front of that tree right there. So this is all within public right-of-way. But how do you go out and talk to them about, all of a sudden, we're changing the landscaping on their property to accommodate this regulation? We're still within city property, but it's a tough discussion. And this is what we're faced with now. We've still got about probably 10% of the corners where we still need to put in ramps. And again, we'll be doing that on a consistent basis and prioritizing those.
Can I ask you a question? Could you go back to the last one? On this one, you don't have a sidewalk on the other side.
Correct.
So what, I mean, so don't we have a bigger pedestrian problem, an ADA accessibility problem, since we don't even have a sidewalk on the other side? What are we doing with that?
That's, that's the other piece. So we've inventoried, we have about roughly eight miles of areas just like this, where we don't have any sidewalk at all. So you don't necessarily have to provide it on every single street. Like, if there's maybe a sidewalk on this side, we could make the decision not to build that. Because you can see by that steep slope here, we probably have to put in retaining wall. It's going to be an expensive sidewalk.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question. So we could, you can have it where there is no sidewalk and it's still ADA, that's in compliance. So Cherry Hills is in compliance.
Correct.
Places in Greenwood, they're in compliance. They don't have a sidewalk. That's okay. But if you have one, you have to have the ramp.
Exactly.
That's all I was asking.
Yeah. So here, and this sidewalk actually is probably too narrow, so you need 42 inches. So ideally, you know, we'll have a plan to come back in here, not only to put in the bed ramp, but we'd at some point have to widen this sidewalk out as well. Because it has to be, be able to fit a wheelchair, essentially.
Thank you.
So this drawing, might be hard to see here, but you can see, so if a typical tree lawn or boulevard area is four to five feet, you've got a four-foot sidewalk, it's anywhere from eight to 10 feet is really where that right-of-way line is, that we own all that, this is part of the city right-of-way out here. So we are going to be trying something new this year. We've identified a service or a vendor who does grinding. And so instead of taking out, you can see on both of these two panels, they're good concrete. Problem is, one has just raised from the other. We can grind that down and meet, still meet ADA, and then we're not tearing out that pavement, or, excuse me, that sidewalk on either side. It's much quicker. It doesn't disrupt the people, citizens' sprinkler systems. They're in and out of there in one day. We're not pouring new concrete. And you can see here, we just did a little, kind of a sample area just east of Craig Hospital, where we had some complaints. There were 22 repair locations identified where it's things like this. And the company, the grinding company, had given us an estimate of about $1,200. And if we had to remove and replace that, it would cost us about $7,500. So we're thinking this is a really good economical solution, especially where there's raised tree roots, like in this situation. Again, you can see, both concrete panels look great. It's just that one is probably heaved, because there's a root growing right underneath here. But more than likely, we'd end up taking both of these out and then having to match up with both the joints here on either side. And we can instead grind this off, save the tree, save the tree roots, and keep going. So that's kind of our plan. You can, this is a good picture, too. We've got two trees. You can see, really, from here all the way down to just beyond that other tree, that probably that whole section would need to be removed and replaced. It would be our typical response in this situation, just because it's kind of heaving back, it's tipping back towards the property. So again, we're looking to use this grinding citywide to address these types of trip hazards when we become aware of them, and then focusing again in that first zone for 2019.
While you're on that side, could I just ask a quick question? Do they give, did they go and do a survey and say, "We could do this," or would they have to grind it? Do they tell you whether they would have to grind it down too far to where they would go down and it wouldn't be worth it?
Anything under about two inches safely, we don't want to do, because most of these sidewalks are poured at four inches thick.
Okay.
And if you leave any less than two inches, it's probably going to crack, deteriorate. So anything two inches and less, it's absolutely a viable option. Anything over that, it's going to be removed and replaced.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, we only have 20 minutes left. We need to finish this and two other things, so I can hurry along.
Yep. So driveway aprons, we have to change that, how we approach those for ADA. And then we are requesting to start to address the missing sidewalk. We're asking for reappropriation of $200,000 to look at the sidewalk along the north side of Gerard here, right by the two hospitals. So with that, I'd answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions, counsel? Mayor Protem Russell.
Just one quick question. This gentleman has been calling me ever since I've been on council. There are no sidewalks on Lowell. Would we be considering sidewalks on Lowell? And it would be on the east side, obviously, because I think the west side is Sheridan. And it's like around Monmouth, Grand.
So we have done an inventory of where those missing sidewalks are. I think what we need to do is come back to you with the plan, because we're not necessarily going to recommend sidewalk everywhere. But on busier streets, or in this case, the one that we are recommending, obviously, there's a lot of pedestrian usage up here, near the hospitals. In that location, I think we need to come up with a plan of how we address those missing segments. Does it make sense? And do we want to invest the money? Because it would have to come from other than concrete utility, because that's really about repairs. Do we want to start to address some of these missing segments in a thoughtful, methodical manner?
Okay.
But I think future CIP will address that.
Thank you. Councilmember Questor.
Thank you. On the trip hazard slide, the example you gave, there were 22 repair locations, and it was $1,200 to repair them via grinding, it was $7,500 to repair them to remove and replace. That is for all 22, correct? All 22 fell under that? Okay.
It's charged, it's charged on a square inch per square foot basis, as opposed to a square foot for concrete. Square foot of concrete.
Do you want to pull the mic up a bit?
Cubic yard of concrete right now is around 170 to 180 cubic yard range, and this is charged on an inch basis.
I assume they charge you for the whole slab? I'm going to call it a little block.
We have to leave, so we have to leave, we have to leave a minimum of four feet, otherwise the concrete's not strong enough. So we have to leave a minimum of four-foot stone, otherwise it's not worth us doing safely.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all the information. It looks like some great planning. All right. Next up is the fee schedule discussion. Finance Administrative Services Director Maria Sabates here to present and discuss the rate schedule with us. That's if you all give room for, you're going to be back, aren't you? So if you want to just move over, you can.
I'll just move back.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Director DeAndrea.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So included in your packet for tonight's discussion was an attached list of the 2019 fee and rate schedule. If you recall, last year, around the same time, the schedule was brought forth, and the director at that time mentioned that we weren't certain whether or not it was a comprehensive list, but we would continue to evaluate current fees, look at new fees. And we included not only the list that you looked at last year as a second attachment, but the first attachment are the fees and rates that would be new or would be changing. And our plan is to ask the city council to adopt the fee schedule by resolution at a future date in the next month or so. And that is based on the advice of the city attorney. And we really want to bring this forth annually, more than likely during the budgeting season versus this time, because I think it's very important that we understand what's included in the budget and what is not. And also, we will encourage transparency by including this information on the website as well. So given our time constraints tonight, I'm willing to talk about the items in Attachment One that are new, if you'd like, or we could open it up for any questions.
I think we should open it up for questions. I'm assuming that everybody read it. So Councilmember, Councilmember Questor, do you have a question?
Oh, pardon me. I'm up from last one.
Oh, leftover from last one. All right. Anyone want to, anyone want to jump in on this? Personally, it made a lot of sense to me, and I'm supportive of it. So what do you need from us?
It really was an opportunity just to ask questions, so that before I bring it back for resolution, for approval, you have an opportunity to share what your thoughts are.
Great. Thank you. Mayor Protem Russell.
Could she go over the other fees that were not on here before? And the ones you said you would go over, the new fees or?
Okay. So I asked, for the ones that are new, I'll ask Maria DeAndrea to speak about, because it was Public Works. And then the other new ones for utilities, it's my understanding that the Water and Sewer Board did have an opportunity to look at those. Tom Brennan is not here, but he asked that I take questions regarding those, if you'd like. And I will definitely respond with input from him as well. So I will ask Maria to talk about the one specific to Public Works.
Certainly. Thank you. So we're, we looked at concrete and our asphalt patching, and any excavation permits. And what we did was look at when we're responding to those types of events, how much is that costing us? So we did how many hours of staff time, and said, okay, at a minimum, we're at, currently at 115, which we increased to, or which was set in 2015. Four years later, we're just doing that same math for a higher wage rate, basically. And the only other change was the block party permits, where we were not providing, or we were providing barricades, and we're no longer doing that. We're going to recommend, just from a liability standpoint, that people either provide their own barricades, or hire a company to do something like that, buy some cones or something else.
So does that also apply to National Mindout? And people that are having block parties, it's going to cost $25 fee for those people as well?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington.
I sit on the Water and Sewer Board, and I was kind of surprised about some of the issues behind the red tag and the increase in the fee there. I talked to a couple of people about that, and I really was surprised at some of the pushback for no longer doing the red tag process and tripling the amount of the fine for that. So if they're going to go ahead and do a mailing, and the mailing for the bill didn't work, then why would they do a mailing for the late fee and then tack on $15? So I was just kind of surprised that people were like, one, I think that they think that it gives them an opportunity to see properties that might be a little bit more derelict or having some problems, or if somebody isn't coming by and picking things up. So there was actually some concern about, you know, neighbors or property, or something might have happened if they see that red tag, maybe, I don't know if there's any police issue with that, that it gives them some additional warning. And I was surprised by a couple of people going, "Well, how am I going to know when to pay my bill?" So they don't mind paying the extra $5, apparently. And sometimes I know the mom across the street with the three kids goes, you know, "I get them occasionally, but it is a reminder to me." And she gets a little busy and sometime with the mail and stuff. So it's both the increase that it's tripling it, and then changing a process that the citizens have been, become used to, not only for maybe sometimes paying their bill, but also for watching out for their neighbors or properties in their community that might be going down. It kind of stands out. So I was a little concerned about that fee going up. So I would like some more discussion about that.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? Councilmember Sierra.
I guess I do have a question. Just overall, just in terms of the fees and rate, how is it that the city looks at and determining whether or not to increase the fees for the city? Or for the residents, I guess?
So I can speak specifically to the ones that the finance organization is proposing as the increase. And then Maria, if you want to comment on the other ones. So specifically for the lodgers and sales and use penalty, this penalty is assessed when a tax return has not been received, and we receive them monthly, quarterly, and annually, based on the tax liability that a particular taxpayer has. The current fee of $15 has been evaluated, because despite the fact that it's in place, 85 to 100 taxpayers monthly do not pay on time. So the rate is being considered to be increased in order to make sure that those 85 to 100 feel a little bit more in the pocketbook if they file late. It's in their best interest to file timely. And I will say, too, one of the questions I had, you know, what do other cities charge? You know, we have an ability to actually increase that rate at 10 to 15% of a tax liability. And ours, fee right now is pretty generous. So the typical monthly filing could be close to $1,000, which would mean that those 85 to 100 individuals might be paying $100 to $150. So it, we look at kind of the occurrence of the number of people that continue to file late, and consider increasing it based on those facts. Secondly, the return check fee, again, you know, you look at increasing them as an effort to mitigate, because currently, we are receiving 15 to 20 return checks each month, and it does cost the city an administrative, administrative time to process those, get in touch with the taxpayer. So we are putting, we are asking for that increase so that we are able to mitigate that. So I can talk about those two specifically. But it is a thoughtful process.
And I would just echo that. I think it's an annual thing that we just need to be, instead, similar to our rate increases, instead of waiting several years and then having them jump up significantly, we should be evaluating this on an annual basis and making slight adjustments, again, that we're charging the rate so that we're recouping the costs that we're expending. So for the projects or the permits that Public Works issues, we have to send an inspector out. We might have to do the markings in the alleys or in the streets, the utility markings for that. And so are we recouping those costs adequately in order to, and that's just what we're doing, is how much time, on average, is it taking us to respond to each one of those permits?
And actually, that's the reason why I was bringing it up, because when I look at the Public Works and also some of the utility ones, it looks like we are trying to recoup the cost, that we probably saw that the, that our expenses were higher, in a sense, and just a little bit off-center. I wasn't sure if it was the same approach on the finance side, but I definitely saw with the Public Works that it looked like we may have been, yeah, that there were additional charges that we were incurring that potentially we need to even out, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington. Oh, you were finished? Oh, you were finished? You didn't, I thought you had it up there. Okay, Councilmember Questa?
As I read this, I was doing it under the impression, and I thought this was a clarification I received last year, that none of these fees that we're charging would ever constitute the city making money from the service. Is that correct? We can only charge as much as it would cost us to administer the service. We can't use this for revenue generation. Is that correct?
That's certainly been my experience, is that we would not, again, that's why we do the math, just to make sure that, on average, we're not, we're not in a for-profit situation.
Sure. So in these places where the fees are increased, and that you've addressed a few of them specifically, that is just for us to get up to the point where we're recouping the city's costs, but not to, you know, especially in the instances where, I'm sure that there are some folks that use that red tag as a reminder. And I'm sure there's folks in the city where things are tight, and, you know, they're just having trouble making that bill. And that is just for us to, again, recover that cost, not so much to, you know, make an extra five bucks off that person that might be having a hard time paying their water bill.
I can't speak for utilities, but I'm assuming that they went through a similar process.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question about federal employees at this point, too. What, are we doing something for those who are sort of without paychecks right now? And how would, I mean, I guess I'm, this brought it up for me, thinking about, are we having a conversation with anyone? Has anybody called and asked, can I have a delay or anything?
Not that I'm aware of. I'll certainly ask my team.
I'd love to have us have a way to make it possible for them. I like what you've done here. I think it makes it, makes a little bit more sense in the way that you're tracking some things, but I, and I certainly don't think it's our job to be trying to remind people to pay their bills. It's part of, you know, being adult and owning a place. But I do think whatever gentle reminders we can do would be helpful for people who do have, you know, lose track of something, and.
Councilmember Berantine?
I've never been the mother of three children, but I imagine I could slip a few things past me sometimes, so I, I think that that point is well taken, along with some of the other reasons. I mean, we're going from a process that people are fairly used to. Actually, it is not, Councilmember Questa, it is not a part of the cost of it, it actually is reducing the cost of it. They're tripling the late charge and actually reducing what work is done. So currently now, if somebody gets red tagged, somebody delivers that. What they would be doing now is just another mailing. So it'd actually reduce the cost while they're tripling the late charge. So there was nothing provided to us in that meeting that substantiated that this was to recoup any cost. And just as a reminder, while it is supposed to be recuperating the cost, it is sometimes a little difficult to kind of get that, you know, feel for exactly how much exactly a cost is. But the money does go into the general fund, so.
That's all. Thank you. So this is going to come before us?
Yes.
The next regular meeting, right?
Yes. And I want to ask if the item that Councilmember Berantine brought up should be a council request, so that the answer can be put forth prior to that meeting, when I'll bring forth a resolution.
Are there at least several others that want the same information?
Yeah, okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Last up is the Inglewood Environmental Foundation Board of Directors Discussion, and Director Maria DeAndrea is here to present.
Yes, just quickly, thank you, Mayor. So the second amended bylaws, which were approved in 1998 by the Eevee Board, states that three very specific positions within the city make up the Board of Eevee. So specifically, the Finance Director, the Engineering Manager, and the Director of Neighborhood and Business Development. With Brad Power, the Director of Community Development, no longer on the board after he resigned from the Eevee Board, we now have a situation, and I'm not the Engineering Manager, I'm the Director of Public Works, we have a situation where we have potentially several people who don't fit these titles. And so the idea for this was to come back, our proposal is to have the Finance Director, Maria Sabata, myself as the Director of Public Works, and the City Manager serve as the Eevee Board. And so we just wanted confirmation from council on that, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Berantine?
Did the Eevee Board accept Mr. Powers' resignation?
We received the letter, we have not made a, taken a formal action on that. I don't know if we have to or not.
I am concerned that this body has no authority over the Eevee Board to go ahead and do your bylaws, or change your structure. That isn't within our power, nor is it within the power of this council to go ahead and even accept his resignation from that board. So if, I would have assumed that you would have had a meeting and gone ahead and, as the Board accepted his resignation, and then that would have triggered in the, the City Manager filling in at that time, so.
So I included the quote in here from the bylaws that says, "The affairs of the corporation shall be managed solely by a board of three persons, who shall be appointed by the City Council of the City of Inglewood, Colorado." So I think that that's our trigger, if you will, to come back and say that the council is, is the one who determines who shall be appointed to the Eevee Board.
But the Eevee Board is set up by a corporate structure, isn't it? By their Articles of Incorporation. And so I don't think we can, I'm pretty sure we can't accept Mr. Powers' resignation, because he's on a board that we don't have authority over for that piece of it. If you want to change the structure, I kind of think that the Eevee Board needs to make a decision first.
Councilmember Berantine, I do believe that we have the power to do that, and it's actually our responsibility to appoint the Board, and that's why they're coming before us.
And I appreciate that you, you believe that, but that's not the way that I'm reading that, so I'd like to have the information.
City Attorney to speak to it, then. I think we have documents here. Would you like to?
If you could.
Firm the interpretation one way or the other?
That'd be awesome.
I think Councilmember, Councilmember Berantine's question is a question that makes sense, because Eevee has been operated with several goals in mind, since it was created by the City of Inglewood City Council 20 or so years ago. And its goals were to deal with the environmental issues associated with redevelopment here, and certain redevelopment or development issues associated with this area. And so it's had things to do, and the way Eevee was set up, it was intended that while this property will revert to the City Council as soon as Eevee ends, in the meantime, Eevee was able to handle those duties, and it says in the Articles of Incorporation, to handle the duties, to make it easier on the City Council. So it's been recognized by the IRS as a subdivision of the city. It operates independently, but it still has to follow the same legal rules as any other municipal government organization. It follows COMA and CORA and all of those kind of things. The bylaws that were set up back in 98 that were accepted do, do include reference to the City Council's role. And basically, Eevee doesn't get to float away from the city. It is a subdivision part of the city. So it's not, it's kind of an odd deal. I think the thing about it that confuses me the most is that the Eevee Directors are appointed by the City Council. And you'll notice that before the Eevee Board does anything, they come back to the City Council with the resolution of support, before they go back and take an action. It appoints, the Articles of Incorporation and the bylaws appoint Directors, or Director Positions that at least existed 20 years ago, to fill those positions. And yet, the charter prohibits City Council from interfering in employees. So it's, it's an odd set of circumstances. In their role as volunteer Eevee Board of Directors, the Eevee Board actually answers directly to the City Council. But since they're not being paid, their actual boss is the City Manager. So it's an, it's an odd setup, and I can see why other cities haven't followed this particular setup. But that's a very long answer, because I know people are listening at home, kind of wondering about Eevee. But the short answer is, Eevee was set up as a subdivision of the city. City staff doesn't get to choose who's going to be the Board of Directors, it's appointed by the elected body of the city, and that is the City Council.
Councilmember Sierra?
I guess my only question that I had on this, because 4G calls it out within the amended bylaws, but is the City Manager going to serve in an interim position, or in the permanent basis? I guess that's my question.
Are you asking specifically about the person right now, or the position?
Well, just going back to the top, we're highlighting the current interim City Manager to be, to be part of the Board. But then when I read the amended bylaws, they say within 4G that is one of those three Directors of Neighborhood, Business Development, blah, blah, blah. But anyway, it states there that any individual named by the City to serve in such position on an interim basis shall serve as Director until such a position is filled on a permanent basis. So my question is, were we looking at this as an interim position, or as a permanent position?
If I could, maybe more than. The, because of the Director of Community Development, you know, his concern is that the redevelopment of the site. So I don't foresee that, unless they redevelop the site, that his potential conflict of interest goes away. So I think our intent would be, is that the City Manager would be in this for the remaining four years of Eevee existence, or until such time it's redeveloped.
Thank you.
Councilmember Questa?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm seeing a secondary component of this, just in terms of specifically drilling down on Mr. Powers' resignation. Are we considering this a vacancy right now, so it doesn't have to be accepted? That seems to be the question, is, did somebody accept that resignation? I'm not saying anything that requires a resignation, and can we compel him to go anyways? It seems to me that Brad has departed that, excuse me, it seems to me that Mr. Powers departed that position. And it is a vacancy right now, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's the clarification. Thank you.
Which is what's, which is what's bringing it to us. Mayor Portem Russell?
A moment of information for that, I do need a clarification on that. I do not believe that there's anything in here that says that the City Council can accept that resignation. I think there has to be some action on the part of the Board for that, at least to open that piece up. I mean, they do still act as a separate piece, because if, you're saying that Eevee Board is directly responsible to council, but there's nothing in here that says that they're responsible directly to us. They are a separate entity. So I think that we actually need more time to go over this than we're going to be able to allow for here, and I think we have some more questions.
Mayor Portem had some, I think, another question, and then let's decide whether we're going to.
I just have a quick question. It seems to me like the Board themselves would be the only ones that could change the bylaws. The council cannot change the bylaws, and according to these bylaws, bylaws, the vacancy that exists would only be an interim position.
So I, I'm hearing, let me ask you the urgency of this. Can we get more information and clarify some of the questions that are fuzzy for people?
Yes, so right now, myself and Maria Sabata are able to sign checks, are both on the Board, so we have at least two members right now. So we could discuss this first.
Counsel, are you comfortable with just having two members at this point?
We don't have a choice.
All right, seems like everybody's okay with that, so could we, it sounds like, yes, go ahead. City Attorney?
Pursuant to the bylaws stated by Councilmember Sierra, it does state that if no individual is named to serve in such position on an interim basis, the City Manager shall serve as a Director in such position, until such position is filled. So by default, the interim City Manager is filling that role. It's a temporary fix, but just letting you know that she has been named as an interim by the terms of the bylaws.
So that doesn't have to come to us in a decision-making role at all? But you're out, so we can continue like this in the meantime, until we get clarity on what's being asked of us tonight?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, I think we'll be adjourned and move into the regular meeting, then. Thank you. And Councilmember Wink is on her way.